Reverend Anderson here? Okay, Mr. Branch has offered to do the invocation for us.
Let us pray. Lord, I ask that you come in our midst today, Lord, and watch over us and guide us, Lord, and be with all those who are out serving, you know, from our police officers to firefighters to our servants and all citizens of Raleigh. And give us, as council members, the power and the will to do as you will have us to do. In your name we pray. Amen.
Ms. Mendel, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first, I would like to call forward the Raleigh Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, and Angela Hatton is here to represent them. Yes, just come on down here, whoever you want to come with you. I have a proclamation for you. Whereas Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated was founded on July 13th, 1913, at Howard University by 22 college-educated African-American women, whose focus was on education and assistance to people in need. Whereas the Raleigh Alumni Chapter was chartered on May 7th, 1938, as the Alpha Zeta Sigma Chapter by 29 sorority members. More than 250,000 women have become members of this public service organization, including more than 300 members in the Raleigh Alumni Chapter. Whereas since its establishment, the chapter has conducted programs that align with all the sorority's five-point program thrusts of economic development, educational development, international awareness and involvement, physical and mental health, and political awareness and involvement. The chapter has hosted numerous activities promoting sisterhood and service to the community, open to the public, is keeping the commitment, and is dedicated to supporting public service nationally and internationally. Whereas the Raleigh Alumni Chapter is celebrating 80 years of public service to the community as of May 7th, 2018, living the legacy, 80 years of excellence. Now therefore do I Nancy McFarland, Mayor of the City of Raleigh, North Carolina, to hereby proclaim May 7th, 2018, in the City of Raleigh as Raleigh Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated Day.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mayor McFarland and the council. Thank you for welcoming us into your home away from home. On behalf of the more than 360 members of the Raleigh Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Incorporated, and as their proud president, we thank you for welcoming us, for recognizing the work that has been done for 80 years, and we plan to be here for 80 to infinity.
Thank you.
To the members, and thank you to everyone here. And congratulations, and God bless you.
Well, thank you all. Thanks for all the work you do and for coming to the meeting today. We appreciate it. Okay, I have two certificates of appointment. One is Patty Williams. Oh, Patty's here. So Patty, come on down. Patty has agreed to accept appointment by the Raleigh City Council to serve a two-year term on the Arts Commission. So thank you very much for giving us your time.
Thank you. Sure. I just want to thank the mayor and the council for their support. This is a very exciting opportunity for me to give back to a city that I love, something about I'm passionate about the arts, so great combination, and thank you again.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Patty. And then we also have Shonda Branch. Okay, she's on her way. Okay, then we have a presentation. We have Dr. Barry Malone is the Chair of the Board of Directors for the Raleigh Hall of Fame, and I think that he is here to announce the 2018 Class of Inductees.
Hi, thank you. Good afternoon, I'm Barry Malone, Chair of the Board of Directors for the Raleigh Hall of Fame. For over 15 years, we've celebrated and honored the men, women, and organizations who have made Raleigh a great city. I am pleased to announce our inductees for 2018. We have eight individuals, two centennials, and two organizations. For the individuals, we have Mr. A.C. Snow. He's a journalist and writer. He's a Raleigh legend. He has written for the Raleigh Times and News and Observer for over 60 years. His columns connect us to the community. Dr. William Bill Hedrick, a family doctor. He has provided over 53 years of continuous health care. He operated the first emergency room at what is today Wake Med, and opened the restaurant Seth Jones 1847. Chief Justice Burley Mitchell, served as a Wake County District Attorney, served on the North Carolina Court of Appeals, and of course retired as Chief Justice of the North Carolina Supreme Court. Millie Dunn DC, she served during, in the Army as a WAC. After completing that, she became a graduate of St. Augustine's End College, and she worked for years as a President of the NAACP in Raleigh, working with both Martin Luther King and Thurgood Marshall. We also have Mort Cogleton. He was on the Raleigh City Council. For 20 years, he volunteered with various groups throughout the city. He was Executive Director of the SBCA, and he received the Order of the Longleaf Pond from Jim Hunt for his service to the community. Robert Wynn III, he was a President Emeritus of Brown Wynn Funeral Home, both the oldest business in Raleigh and the oldest funeral home in North Carolina. And he served in the, served in the Army. He was active with the J.C.'s, and was President of the Wake County Easter Sil Society. Ronnie Shavelik, he was a legend both on and off the court. After playing at NC State and ending his MBA career, he returned to Raleigh. And while here, he served on the State Athletic Council. He was the Chair of a Wake County School Bond Program, and spent his life supporting those with physical and mental disabilities. Thomas Sayer, for the last 30 years, he has defined the role of what it means to be a public artist. He was one of the earliest advocates for revitalizing downtown Raleigh. In fact, he moved there before it was popular and trendy. And of course, his most famous monument is the Shimmer Wall that now adorns the convention center. We also have two centennial candidates. Father Thomas Frederick Price, he's the first native North Carolinian to be ordained a Catholic priest. In 1896, he was appointed the pastor of Sacred Heart Catholic Church, and he started a Catholic orphanage for boys and girls that ran well into the 1970s. Also, we have Canty McDowell Venable Sutton. She was a true Renaissance woman. She was responsible for fostering some of Raleigh's most enduring landmarks, including the Raleigh Little Theater and the Rose Garden. And we're happy to have two organizations this year. Haven House, that has for 43 years served the city. No journey, no matter the journey that brings at-risk youth to their doorstep, Haven House provides programs to help them overcome challenges and get their lives back on track. And finally, the Rex Healthcare Guild. Established in 1936, it now has over 1,000 volunteers. Whether it's a teddy bear, a con word, or access to a life-changing medical device, they have helped and comforted thousands of patients. So we have a strong class this year. We hope we'll see all of you Sunday, November 4th, at our event. And on behalf of the Raleigh Hall of Fame Board, thank you.
Thank you very much. It's a great event, and it's always a great time for everyone to honor the people that contributed. Okay, I have one final certificate of appointment, which is Shonda Branch. So Shonda has agreed to accept appointment by the Raleigh City Council to serve another two-year term on the Arts Commission. Thank you so much for doing that and donating.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon, council members. Just want to thank you again for your vote of confidence in my position on the Raleigh Arts Commission. I've enjoyed myself in the last four years. I'm looking forward to two more where I will chair the commission and continue to work with the grants programming to ensure that municipal dollars are spent effectively when it comes to the arts programming right here in the City of Raleigh. Thank you so much. Enjoy your afternoon.
Thank you very much. Okay, and now we, next we have the agency grantee presentation. I have Lee O'Connell from the Raleigh Little Theater. Or not. Or maybe Charles.
Yeah, Charles Fanniff. Thanks very much. Great. Good afternoon. For those of you who don't know, Raleigh Little Theater are, we are a, I'm sorry, let me get started here. Great. The last time we were here to present was May of 2017, so I wanted to bring you all up to date on what's new since then. For those of you all who are new to council, we are a partner of the Office of Raleigh Arts, and we also lease our facility from the city, and we're part of Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources, and we have a really great relationship with our staff, who we really appreciate, several of whom are here today. And our mission, just speaking briefly, is theater and education, and specifically focusing on accessibility and being inclusive. So this is our campus. Just as a reminder, it includes the Stevenson Amphitheater, the Raleigh Rose Garden. As you heard, Canty Sutton, just being inducted into the Raleigh Hall of Fame, she's responsible for a lot of this, and two interior performance spaces, the Sutton Theater and the Gaddy Goodwin Theater. We recently completed a major gifts initiative, and this was, last time we reported, it was just at the beginning of this construction work, and C2 Studios was our architects. The city chipped in money through CIP, and then we actually reimbursed the city for some of the expenses that went beyond what was available to be budgeted. So this is what the space looked like before, and this is what it looks like afterwards. A pretty big difference. We really appreciate Mayor McFarland and Ms. Crowder being at the dedication ceremony, and we've improved the accessibility of the space. We've also upgraded all the lighting to LED, which is really exciting and much more energy efficient, and we've increased our connection to the outdoor spaces, which I think is something that we can continue to leverage more, because it's such a beautiful campus. Just some things that are coming up in the near future. Blood Don't Sign My Name, which is the story of a racially charged murder in Oxford, North Carolina, unfortunately still very relevant today. That opens next Friday. We'd love to see you there, as well as Into the Woods, which is our summer teen conservatory this summer. And then we also have sensory-friendly performances of all of our family series shows, and those are specifically designed to be a welcoming environment for families who have children with autism and other types of sensitivities. You may have read about that in the News and Observer this last week. We also really want to program that outdoor space more. So some things that are coming up soon, we have a day-long visual arts festival happening Saturday, May 12th, Art in the Garden. Rain date is the following date, if it rains out. We have our summer movie series, Free Movies, in July and August. That's really popular with the community. And Groove in the Garden, which is a really fun day of all local music that'll happen Saturday, September 22nd. One other thing that we're really, really excited about, this is the whole lineup at the Raleigh Symphony Orchestra. We're going to have the first outdoor classical music in Raleigh since the early 2000s, which we think is pretty interesting. Since the symphony moved out to Koka Booth, there hasn't been a regular series. So that's the Raleigh Symphony. They'll be out there in September and again in May, and we hopefully, that's a great opportunity to introduce people to classical music. We've also recently published a history of the Raleigh Rose Garden. Shelley Crisp, who's supposed to be with me here today, wrote that, and we're really excited about that. It's all on our website, and it's also available for purchase in a book. And we've got some public art that's going to be installed really soon. We're really excited. Jesse by Canty Tanner, and, and some new facade art piece, and these have both been approved by city staff. The last thing I wanted to mention is that we're very excited about the recent passing of the Small Area Plan for Cameron Village and Hillsborough Street. And it's really important to us, as we continue to grow this outdoor programming, that we improve those connections. So we just ask you and let you know that that's a priority to us, and we're really excited about those improvements to the sidewalks, and, and really to be a great resource to the whole neighborhood. Happy to answer any questions or comments or anything?
Any questions? Thank you very much. The new space is beautiful. It is.
Awesome. Thanks very much. Hope you all visit soon.
Thank you all, sir. Thanks. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I have two items. One is, item E1 is being withdrawn and will come back later. That is a petition annexation. And then I have item L4 is being pulled. So are there any other items that anyone wishes to pull from the consent agenda? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, let's go to L4. Ms. Mendel?
Yes, this is for a pilot program for controlling parking in a residential neighborhood near the Hay-Spartan Historic District. And I am in support of this, but I have received a lot of, a number of emails from nearby residents who are concerned about the impact on their parking and ability to park. And I spoke with several staff members this morning to see what the options are, and it sounds to me like the best thing to do at this point is to move forward with this pilot program, with the understanding that if nearby residents are negatively impacted by this, they should get in touch with, with me, and we'll see about what the options are for expanding the area that's covered by this pilot program. But we'd like to give it some time to see how that works out. So I am in favor of it, and I make a motion to approve it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll move down to the report and recommendation of the Planning Commission.
Just one, just one item, but we'll start with just a quick review of what's currently calendared for public hearing. We have one item, mid-month daytime hearing, rezoning case, and then we have four items, including one rezoning case, comp plan amendment, the budget, this calendar for June 5th. So just to keep that in mind, we have reporting from Planning Commission, one item. This is located on Overto Mill Road, just a little south of Craft Tree Valley Mall, whereas, you know, there's an office park located, and the request is to go from a seven-story OX zoning to a 12-story CX zoning with conditions. Planning Commission has reviewed this and has unanimous recommendation for approval. The Northwest CAC also had a favorable vote for approval, and staff recommends a public hearing date of June 5th.
Are you sure about that public hearing date?
Well, given what's on the agenda, obviously the budget is the big one. There's not a lot of other zoning cases stacked up in front of this, though, so, but it's at the discretion of the council if you would like to hold this till later.
So I make a recommendation that if we accept this one on June 5th, with the budget being on that time as well, that this is the only one we accept for June 5th.
Okay.
Okay.
So we'll keep that in mind with our recommendation when we're here in two weeks.
Keep one in mind as we resolve everything else tonight, hopefully.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So do I have a motion?
Move for approval, June 5th.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, let's move on to special items. The first is the Six Forks Road Quarter Study. Reminder, standing is, this is just the language.
This is an edit to the language that was proposed at your April 3rd meeting. I can go through a brief PowerPoint, so you can see what the language looks like. It was also included in your backup.
Does anyone have any questions?
I just want to make sure that the language is a clarification that is, supports, you know, stakeholder input into the plan, and not, is changing the intent.
Correct. It provides clarification to tie that policy to the map, showing where Urban Boulevard and Parkway Boulevard would be used.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay. Do you need authorization for this? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, next we come to rezoning Z1717, 615 West P Street.
So you have, you should have a handout on the table in front of you that has a full print version of the conditions that were offered by the applicant. So you have held this a couple of times to allow the applicant to revise conditions, and they have done that. So we have new conditions dated the 20th, received, the draft received by staff on the 20th, and then the signatures on the 26th, so in good shape there. The first four conditions are not changing from what you have reviewed previously, but there are changes in parts of Condition 5. So in 5B, there's a revision to the language regarding the step-back on the south side of the building, specifying that it needs to be on the east end, that step-back needs to be on the east end of the facade. And then in the language about the rooftop amenity, there's a lot more specificity here. So previously, they were prohibiting outdoor amplification. They've expanded that to say no electronic amplification. They've also limited the total area of patio or deck. They've said that that patio or deck has to be located directly on the roof surface. It cannot be elevated, and they've specified how large the shade structure on the roof can be. They've also prohibited a number of height encroachments on the roof, so solar panels, wind turbines, all, they're listed here on the screen and also in your handout. They've also made provisions about where rooftop mechanicals can be located in relationship to the building to the south. That includes keeping that equipment relatively close to the building to the south, but keeping the, any restaurant-related exhaust away from that building to the south. And then finally, providing a provision for some screening in relationship to the, any deck patio area that is constructed on the roof. Okay. So I'm happy to answer any questions about those.
No, thank you.
Great.
Any questions? Okay. I think we're good.
Well, I guess I do have one question.
I've got a question for the applicant.
And maybe it's the same question I have. I was wondering about the height.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Right now, we have a four-story height limit, which limits it to 62 feet in height, and I know there has been some additional conversation about maybe further reducing that to a foot height.
So Mac, what we've found is that I do appreciate the work you all have done as the rooftop amenities, making really clear to the paramount what, what you're going to do and not going to do. If you agree, and I'm going to pose this as a motion, or at least a sense of a motion, if you agree that you can do all that we've asked of you in 58 feet, I think that you will find support on the council for that. But you need to confirm with us if that's possible, because you only have two days left before you, you can't make any changes.
Okay. Yes, we would be willing to add a condition to limit the height of the building to no more than 58 feet.
Okay.
All right, so, Mac, you and I have had multiple conversations, and I've attempted to, for my own clarification, and you've seen this diagram twice now. And I just want you to look at this and see, obviously, the conditions are complex, and it always helps me to get a visual representation, so I can put all of the various elements that have been discussed into a context. And obviously, and of course, we've been sharing this with Mr. Pettish as well, and we've been going back and forth. And so I'm hoping that this is an accurate representation of our conversations, and that if there's some areas where you, hopefully, there's enough copies to get around. Do you have a copy?
I do not have one. I have what you sent, the earlier version.
It's coming, it's coming right here. But obviously, the main one's the one that Counselor Crowder mentioned there. It's building height, 58 feet maximum. There's the size of the roof amenity and its location. There's, obviously, there's going to be some rooftop construction with the elevator and the stair. There's some envelope here with the dotted line about the maximum height for the shading devices and the bar structure. I think there's agreement about this patio screen wall already here, and general agreement about the mechanical screen. I guess the one area that the conversation has gone back and forth has to do with what amount of the paramount balcony is going to be looking at a stepped-back facade versus a not-stepped-back facade. And so we've, we've, we've gone back and forth on this 40 versus 50 versus 60 percent step-back. And so I just want to get your comments on all those things, whether those all seem to add up to some conditions that you can craft and bring back that are potentially in agreement.
I think most of what your, is on your diagram is reflected in these conditions, except for the percentage on the step-back, which we've talked about. We committed to a 50% minimum, 15-foot additional step-back from the rear property line to create more of a view shed looking to the east. We've had some internal conversation about how far we can increase that. There's a concern, because we're trying to make the room count by having two rooms on the, I guess it could be three levels of the hotel above the first level. And so when you start getting to 60%, or, you know, there's a range in there where it could really impact the ability to have that column of rooms, so that's, that's the concern. We know it's going to be more than 50%, we just don't know how much at this point.
So Mac, I'm going to say to you, I've just got a quick question. I think I know the answer, but I just want to ask the question. Do you have the capability of getting signatures today as it relates to the 58 in the conditions? Could you get them before the tonight session?
I believe we could, yes.
Okay. So, Mayor, I'm going to make a motion that we hold this, ask them to add the 58 feet as the height of the building, add that as the next condition, and hold it until tonight at 7:00.
Go second for that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is the tax credit application funding for Sir Walter Apartments in Beacon Ridge.
Mayor and council, this is a follow-up to your last meeting, where there were two additional projects that you had some questions on, and Larry Jarvis is here with a few comments to respond to those questions.
Good afternoon. As the manager said, there were two projects that you asked us to hold for one cycle for additional information. Staff did meet with Mr. Thompson and Ms. Crowder. We had a very good discussion about the projects, and again, others were Beacon Ridge and the Sir Walter Apartments. Again, just to remind you, the Sir Walter is located in the downtown area, and Beacon Ridge is located off of Rock Quarry Road, close to the Belt Line. You can see that Sir Walter is 157 elderly units that would be preserved, Beacon Ridge, 120 new family units that would be created. I did want to note that the request from the city is 4.6 million. Beacon Ridge had requested 2.5 million from the county. That 2.5 million is not included in the staff recommendation that is going to the county commissioners. The amount of funding available for the county to distribute was just under 3 million. They did recommend funding three other projects with the available funding. That staff recommendation will go to the county commissioners on May 9th for their consideration. But again, staff recommendation is to proceed with extending the conditional commitment to both projects, but we are available to answer questions that you might have.
Move approval.
Wait a minute. I have a, Dicky Thompson asked me to read a statement, but if you had a question or...
Just a quick curiosity question. Is the Sir Walter, is that an age-restricted property? I mean, would it...
It is for the elderly, 62 and above.
And that would remain going forward?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate that. So I do have a statement from Mr. Thompson. He asked me to read. He said, "First of all, I'd like to thank the council for unanimously voting at our last meeting to hold these two projects until today, so that a closer look could be given at their project costs. As elected officials, it is our fiduciary responsibility to ask questions regarding the use of taxpayers' money to ensure it is being spent in the most impactful manner. Both of these projects were pulled due to the fact that their cost per unit was so much higher than the other projects that had been presented to us. Over the past two weeks, I've spent a great deal of time meeting with city staff, DHIC, and YMCA staff to make a more in-depth look at these costs. For the Beacon Ridge project, there were several mitigating factors that made their units cost more than twice the average cost per unit of other projects. Combining a school, YMCA, and affordable housing projects on the same site required an unusually large tract of land. The tract that was selected was severely site-challenged, with both large amounts of rock and wetlands, which required the use of large retaining walls to raid the grade, raise the grades. These costs, coupled with the fact that they lost their HUD financing and used the 4% tax credit program, drove up their cost per unit. However, in my overall, my opinion, the overall benefit to the community outweighs the cost differential in this case. I applaud the YMCA for their willingness to make such investment in the community by building their new YMCA. For the Sir Walter project, although the City of Raleigh cost per unit was in line with the other projects, the overall project cost of $251,441 per unit was almost 50% higher than the other project's average cost. The primary reason was due to the cost of the building, which was no doubt impacted by the location. 95% of the units are only... 95 percent of the units are only one-bedroom. I'd hope that we could provide these residents a more desirable place to live, which would include larger units, ample green space, and closer proximity to grocery stores. However, I've been informed by city staff that there would be no other place available for these residents to relocate due to the short remaining current lease period at the Sir Walter. I do not want to take the risk of not having a suitable place for these folks to live. Therefore, having done due diligence with these projects, I would like to ask Mayor McFarland to make a motion for approval in my absence for both the Beacon Ridge and Sir Walter projects." So moved.
Second.
Okay.
So just, yeah, a comment. I, I think I speak for all the council, and there wasn't a lot of discussion about Counselor Thompson's concern because we all have a tremendous amount of respect for the due diligence that he does on every project. And so I applaud him wanting to dig deep in this, make sure this is on balance, a great project. And I'm glad that he's done that research and has come to that conclusion. Again, as I said last time, these, both of these projects are in places that are unique, and we'll probably never do any senior housing again downtown because of the cost. The other project on Rock Quarry Road, the site, is one that is just hugely in need of redevelopment, and it's just amazing, the partners who have come together to create this suite of services here to really promote economic development and human capital development in this area. So these are both great projects. It's not cheap to do great things, but these are both great projects, so.
And I definitely want to say, first of all, thank you to staff for your work on the Sir Walter so that we do not have a situation that we've had with previous senior housing. So I want to say thank you for that, and also to the entire council as we continue to show our commitment with counting all of these projects over $19 million just this year in affordable housing projects. We are committed to the work. We continue to work. There's more that needs to be done, and we just ask the private sector to continue to assist us and step out and build because we are a city that has to make sure that we value everybody, no matter where they are and where they live, and that we care about everyone. So I definitely want to say thank you all, and ready to cast my vote.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have text change, TC 1117, Senior Housing.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I recall this was discussed at your last meeting, and as a reminder, this is a text change that would alter an existing use category within the UDO, and it takes two existing uses. Number one, renames the classification of use to continuing care retirement community. So it's combining a rest home and congregate care into one use.
We already had the use.
That's correct.
Just we're renaming it.
It's renamed, and then there's an alteration to some of the standards. Yes, ma'am. So as we've continued to have this conversation, there was a question about the zoning districts where this would be permitted as an allowed use. A CCRC as currently proposed would be a special use in the R1, R2, R4, and R6 zoning districts. It would be what we call a limited use, which means there are limitations to it in R10 and RX zoning districts.
Can you just speak to what the limitations are? Do you remember?
Certainly. So there's a requirement that you have a minimum lot size. In R10, it's a minimum of five acres. There's a minimum amount of landscaping that would be required on-site. The landscaping cannot include the protective yard, that is a requirement.
Do you know what the protective yard requirement is?
It ties back to an existing standard in the code. I'm going off memory, but it's a certain width, I want to say a 10-foot or a 5-foot width of landscaping with trees in it, but I can get you specific information if you'd like. And then obviously, there are general code standards that do apply, things like parking requirements and lighting and general landscaping, that type of thing. So when we spoke at the last meeting, there was a question about the R10 district specifically, and where we might find R10 parcels that are five acres in size in close location to mixed-use zoning districts. So staff did some homework here, and I know this is going to be tough to parse out, but what we're showing is every instance where there's R10 zoning that is five acres and more located close to mixed-use zoning. So don't squint too hard. I've got some examples I'm going to show you that are blown up. This is just a citywide perspective that shows, that confirms that, yes, you find this all around the city. I think that's the takeaway from this map. So if we start looking at more specific locations, you know, here's, we're south of Pool Road here, and we've got a nice vacant tract that's five acres in size that's located directly adjacent to mixed-use zoning. We're located on Parnell Road here. So this would be a location that's available for continuing care retirement community. And I'll just kind of breeze through these. If you have questions about the specifics of the site, let me know. Here's a developed property on Kent Road, south of Western Boulevard, and we're now on the east side of Kent Road. So obviously, there's development on the parcel. Doesn't mean it couldn't be redeveloped into something more, but obviously, having structures on the property somewhat complicate redevelopment. Here's a parcel on Garner Road that's directly south of the interstate, and it's directly adjacent to CX3 zoning. Here's an odd-shaped parcel on Cherry, which is on the south side of Carolina Pines Avenue. Here's a long parcel on Pool Road, Zoned R10, conditional use, fully wooded, so redevelopment Here's another parcel on Garner Road. We're on the west side of Garner Road. Again, undeveloped property today. Another undeveloped property on Old Birch Road, south of Rock Quarry. Here's a parcel on Lee Road. I believe there is a structure here, but it is, we'll call it underdeveloped. It's not fully developed. Developed parcel on Baymar. We are south of Glenwood Avenue. Acorn Circle, and this was a rezoning case from a few years back, where we've got a fair amount of R10 with mixed use at the front. And then you recently saw this rezoning on Litchford Road. It's R10 conditional use that's adjacent to OX, and there's some additional parcel or property on the other side, on the west side of Litchford Road. So this is just an example of where we find this throughout the city. Again, it happens in just about every quadrant, and some sites might be trickier than others to redevelop. But happy to answer any questions about this or about the text change itself.
Got a question. How tall by right could the buildings be in the CCRC in one of these R10 districts?
So R10 generally places a cap of 40 feet maximum height, but I believe that if this were developed as either an apartment building or a civic building, it could go a little bit taller than that. I think the cap there is 45 feet, but in either instance, it's three stories.
So the cap's pretty much the same in R10?
Yes, ma'am. At three stories.
Could be townhouses or whatever. Okay.
And is there a minimum building footprint? You think of these as being larger footprint buildings?
There is no maximum building footprint regulation for this type of use or any other use. There are impervious limitations on properties, but there is no maximum building footprint.
Well, I really appreciate the conversation that we've had about this, and I think I've heard from one of the proponents that you've actually gave an interpretation that even if you went for a partial R10, you'd still have to have the full five acres there. So there's no scenario where you'd have mostly a mixed use and then a little bit of R10. If you wanted any R10, you'd have to get five acres of R10. So that sort of means that any project that you do in R10, it'll be a large five-acre parcel, minimum of R10. And what it also means is, rather than a mixed-use parcel, and I was looking at the abutting single-family, this is a perfect example here, this whole side of this project is all single-family, and most of the projects that you, most of the parcels you showed had substantial single-family right next to them. Guess the concern here is where an institutional project would normally be built in a mixed-use district, and they would get the residential transition of 50 feet or so. In this R10 setting, it would be by right with what would be the setback, from the minimum setback from the, from the single-family residential line.
So it depends on building type, and generally, building types are required to have a 20- or 30-foot setback, I believe, in residential. But again, I can confirm that if you'd like.
Would the setback be whatever it is for R10?
It's based on the building type, yes, ma'am. And that's where I'm maybe not speaking with precision because the setbacks are different for each building type and there's a new district.
If it was mass, like an apartment building, the setback would be the same as an apartment building in R10?
That's correct.
I would assume most of these would be in that sort of format.
I think that's, that's pretty fair. Yes, ma'am.
So what that leads me to wonder is that in a typical institutional development like this in a mixed-use district, we'd have a 50-foot setback, and then we'd have height transitioning. Of course, it starts at 40 feet, so. Versus in this one, it would be by right, and there would be a much smaller setback to the single-family neighborhood, even though the building could potentially be quite massive, if not tall. So I'm just concerned that we're, it would be better to have a public process if we're going to look at, especially if we're going to look at a five-acre development, that's a very large development, abutting, single-family residential, rather than saying, let's do something by right here that won't have any public engagement.
So what if it was an apartment?
It could be a five-acre apartment building.
Right, the same thing.
That's a big building. And do we want to allow that by right?
In R10?
It's already there.
Five-acre building?
In R10?
If they have, yeah.
Well, I think, I think the likelihood of someone building a five-acre building is probably silly because there's going to be other things there. I think the greater thought here is, is that an adequate setback that we have currently as it relates to R10 in something that we haven't allowed before at this size? And I think that, is that a 50-foot setback?
Again, I'd have to check. It's dependent upon the building type. I don't believe it's as large as 50.
Okay.
But I can look that up.
I was trying to get in my head what that looked like, so that, so that we might move forward with the project, just trying to figure out where the wins are here so that everybody feels like they have a little bit of what they wanted in the ordinance. So am I hearing that the problem is you're concerned about what the setbacks might be against an R10 in a five-acre space that could be built out? Is that what I'm understanding?
Well, that plus the idea of a massive apartment building being built right next to smaller residential homes.
Yeah, and again, the idea that in the other residential districts, a special use permit is required. And I know the city attorney looked into whether there were some concerns about, you know, the time length because a special use permit expires after a year, and whether it's, whether we could expand that and in, across all the residential districts. And I don't know if we've got an answer on that at this point.
We have looked at whether that could be expanded, and it would have to be uniform to have an expansion.
So we could give, we could say a special use permit lasts for two years if we made it for all the residential districts, not just for, not treat, not treat R10 differently.
That's correct, and for all continuing care retirement communities regardless of the district in which they locate it.
Right.
That would be lawful.
Then, you know, for me, this is, for me, this has always been about, you know, residents in a neighborhood being able to have some involvement in what's going on in the neighborhood. And I think there, you know, to me, there's a couple of different ways we can do it. And this is not about trying to keep seniors from having housing in neighborhoods. The idea is just to make compatible neighborhoods. And so I think we could either explore expanding the special use permit timeframe for all, for all of these uniformly, or we could say, senior housing can't happen in R10, and if you want to do senior housing in R10, you need to come do a, request a rezoning, and then that involves neighborhood participation and bringing it back to council. So that, either one of those would be my...
Well, I don't, I don't think, what I'm hearing Travis say is that anything that would be built is outside the parameters of what's already allowed in R10.
That's correct.
Besides, would not be outside the parameters of what's already allowed in R10.
That's correct. And to answer the question that was asked previously, the setback, the rear setback would be 20 feet?
20 feet?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And that's another question. Travis, what would, what would be the requirements to get a special use permit in this kind of scenario? And what would be the findings you'd have to make?
Right. So to obtain a special use permit, you've got to obviously submit an application and appear before the Board of Adjustment. The Board of Adjustment reviews a structured set of what we call showings or findings. There are six or eight of them that generally apply to all special use permit requests. And so the applicant would be required to stand up and affirmatively prove that these findings or showings have been met. And if the applicant can do that, then the special use permit must be granted. Because this is a quasi-judicial hearing, there is an allowance for testimony, for public testimony. However, there are certain things that a general layperson cannot speak to, such as traffic or engineering. You have to be a licensed professional to do that in a quasi-judicial hearing.
But the showings relate to contextual compatibility?
They speak to compatibility, character, that type of thing. Yes, sir.
And so would it, letting neighbor be able to provide testimony on their sense of the impact of a large building?
Provided it's not contrary to what the state law permits for testimony, yes.
So we had this discussion, obviously, a few times in committee because the special, because of the, whether it's a certificate in need or the state permitting or federal permitting, or whatever this process is, takes a couple of years at least, was sort of the issue that, that came up. So you're saying if the special use permit was good for two years, it would have to be across all, like, all the residential where it's already required?
Yes, ma'am. You could not separate and have a different standard for, say, R1 through R6 and have a different time period for R10.
What about the mixed use?
So anything subject to the special use permit would have to have the same expiration period.
But I don't think we are talking about having a special use permit in mixed use just in the residential districts.
So what would it take to get the special use permit changed to two years for one use?
That's going to require a text change because the one-year period is currently embedded in the special use portion of the UDO.
Question, would it be, since that's another text change, before you can do this text change, would it be amenable to the council to, to acknowledge that senior housing is important to us, and we want to try to find places to put it into the new way we're going to configure it? That not pulling R10 out and saying that you come back for rezoning doesn't deny the ability, it just brings it back to the table. Is that something that people could feel comfortable with?
I could go even further than that and say, if we pull it from R10, that we continue to have discussions about how we can make it happen in R10, and not, not just necessarily limiting it to a rezoning.
I mean, we've certainly been having the discussion for months, and it's allowed in R10 currently. Right?
Currently.
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
I mean, we're trying to make this, it sounds to me, I mean, we want it, we're trying to make it easier to have a senior living in communities. That's the goal.
Yes.
Sounds to me like your, your issue is with the size of the building, which has already been set by the rules of R10, and the closeness to the neighbors, which has already been set by the rules of R10.
Yes, ma'am.
So you want to have a different standard of how close it can be for retirement homes? Is that what I'm hearing?
So I'm going to...
I mean, this is, this is the, I understand, but this is the most low-impact. There's no driving. It's pretty quiet after 6 o'clock.
Real quiet.
You know, if you want something adjacent to a neighborhood, this is about as low-impact as it can get.
Well, this has been brought up to me by folks who live in R10 neighborhoods, and I think some of their concerns are noises from ambulances and fire trucks that often are called to these facilities. Also, depending on how institutional it becomes, you know, deliveries and trucks and things like that. So I think, you know, again... deliveries and trucks and things like that. So I think, you know, again, the purpose is not to deny seniors the right to live in a neighborhood, it's more about treating all the residential neighborhoods the same. So I'd like to see if, what Councilman Crowder, Councilperson Crowder suggested, and Councilperson Cox amended, I think, I could certainly support those.
Which is just not allowing it in R-10?
Not allowing it in R-10 unless they bring it back for rezoning and continue the discussion to see what other options are available.
Also, very contrary to the discussion that we just had about affordability. Because when you add the layers of having to apply for rezonings and all of that, then you add a, another layer of expense to what we're trying to do, which is to make way for seniors to live in residential areas. I mean, I, you know, I would love to get this done, because we've been talking about it forever, but it seems like there's still...
Well, and...
So, so is the issue, from, from what I'm hearing, is the emergency services to a life care center?
That's one of, one of the issues. The main issue is that if you live in R-1, 2, 4, or 6, you have the ability to weigh in on what's happening in your neighborhood. And if you live in R-10 for this, you don't. And that, you know, and I, I understand that R-10 is, you know, increased density. And it's not just about affordability. I mean, a lot of these senior housing facilities tend, can be very expensive.
Right.
So, you know, it's not that I'm trying to limit affordable housing or anything like that.
I'm just saying, if you make it so you can't build it and you have to rezon, that is a, a layer of expense. I think we're all assuming that they're going to be a massive, and they might be, or they might not be. So I'd suggest we just hold this, so we can keep talking about it, because I don't think we're going to have a result right now. So if there's no objection, we'll hold this item.
Okay.
Okay. That takes us to out the receding ordinance. I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The opposed? Awesome.
Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just one item on your agenda today. We do have a property item. TJ McCourt from Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources is going to show you a few slides about this. In this particular case, this is a land acquisition where all the parties have agreed, so we just wanted to go ahead and put it on the agenda and describe that to you. It's, it's an expansion of some of existing property associated with one of our park sites. So we would ask for your approval after Mr. McCourt explains that to you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Just a quick overview of the site that we're looking at today. We're at 3401 South Hall Road. This is up in northeast Raleigh. We are adjacent to Marsh Creek Park. The site itself is 33 wooded acres, currently undeveloped. As I said, it's adjacent to Marsh Creek Park, where we have a skate park, very active community center, some softball fields, and a park maintenance operations facility. Acquisition of this site would significantly improve park access for the area, especially for residents living east of Marsh Creek Park at this point. New Hope Road to the west is the current access point to the park. By extending out to South Hall Road, though, we could, we could provide access from both the east and west. The Rocky Branch Creek, or the Rocky Creek runs through the site. As with a lot of Blue Line Stream corridors, there's plenty of natural resource benefit that would go along with keeping a property like this in conservation. Now, that creek does drain directly into the Neuse River, so the water quality benefits here would be significant. All of this aligns very well with the city's strategic plan, especially growth in natural resources, Objective 2, which encourages, encourages us to increase the connected network of green spaces by conserving your natural resources and promoting outdoor activity. Altogether, we would create 140 contiguous acres of open space by adding this to Marsh Creek Park. This transaction was done in partnership with the Conservation Fund of North Carolina. They're a third-party nonprofit that works with private landowners to get land just like this under conservation. The appraised value for the property was 1.75 million, but the Conservation Fund was able to reach a negotiated price of 926,000. So what we recommend for you today is to authorize us to enter into the purchase contract with the Conservation Fund, and also authorize the associated budget transfers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
The opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Okay, if we move on to committee reports, there's no report from Economic Development and Innovation. We will be meeting on Tuesday, May 22 at 11:00.
Uh, go to your calendar, go to your calendar. Growth in Natural, Growth in Natural Resources meeting will be tomorrow, May 2, and Wednesday, May 9. Both meetings will be held here in the chamber at 4. Thank you.
Okay, Neighborhoods?
Yes.
Transportation?
Wait a minute.
May 2 and May 9.
Yes, ma'am. May 2, May 9. We're making up one that we missed.
Okay.
So May 2 and May 9.
Okay, so where am I going? Okay, wait for the clerk. Healthy Neighborhoods will meet on the 22nd, 4:00 p.m. in room 305.
But what's, there's nothing on the agenda.
Did you report out the missing middle? I thought you were still in the committee.
Oh, it is, but it's not on the listed, on the, oh, I see. Okay, sorry.
Next time, not this time, next time.
I had the wrong one. Gotcha.
All right.
Transportation will meet May 22 at 3:00 p.m. here in the council chamber. On May 22, 3:00 p.m., here in the council chamber.
Okay, wait a second. What time are you?
3:00.
3.
4:00. They're at 4:00. We switched locations.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, that takes us to the report of Mayor and City Council. Mr. Cox?
The only thing I would like to report is that as of a few weeks ago, fishing is now allowed at Forest Ridge Park in District B. And welcome everyone to come on out and partake.
Okay. Stewart?
I just want to say that we had a great time in Seattle last week during our inner-city trip. And one of the biggest kind of lessons I was hoping to take away from that was knowing that Seattle's 10 to 15 years ahead of us on their growth. What do they wish they had done differently about 10 years ago? So I think we really got a handle on what that was, and it was a lot about infrastructure around transit, and a lot of infrastructure around housing, and really digging into our missing-middle piece. So I'm really excited about the work that our staff and our city are already doing, and, and hoping to keep pushing onward. So just want to say, had a great time. Thank you.
Thanks. Stevenson?
I have a comment that starts off just like hers. We had a great time in Seattle. I want to thank the chamber and everyone else who put that trip together. Tremendous lessons learned. For me, it was mostly about homelessness and affordable housing, the lessons that they told us that was exactly what Counselor Stewart said, which is that they wished that they had gotten ahead of their skyrocketing growth in land prices to fund these high-priority locations for affordable and workforce housing. And it's something I've been talking with most of the councils about and staff, and I look forward to more information from staff about putting together the, look at the feasibility of an affordable housing bond at the next opportunity, so that we can take advantage of the lessons we learned in Seattle. And that is that we can have funding, so we can do that high-priority, fund those high-priority sites for affordable and workforce housing, especially along future transit lines.
Definitely ditto on Seattle. Also, I want to thank the Fair Housing Board and staff for a great Fair Housing Summit this past Friday. Dr. Eddie Claude, I'm sorry, Claude, Dr. Eddie Claude was the speaker. He gave a great message. And one thing that we need to keep in mind is that, do we have a value gap? How we see people, as far as how we implement things and rules and policies? Is it really economics, or is it value? What do we value? It was a great message. May 8, the YMCA is the Lighteners Y Achievers Banquet at the Raleigh Convention Center. Definitely hope all can come out and participate. They do a great job working with the youth across Raleigh. And they take them on college tours, they bring in professionals to come in and speak and present. And the youth lead, the youth talk about activities and events that they're a part of, and some of them will be presenting at the banquet. And then, lastly, I want to talk about the Green Chair Project, a great organization that helps those in need through partnerships. They're definitely working with the residents over in the Raleigh North Community. And that is all I have.
I just want to thank everybody for the great program and turnout yesterday at Raleigh Union Station. Thanks, everybody, for the work to bring that project together. It's incredible, and really, we've already seen some of the economic development that comes from that in the Dillon, and I know we're going to see a great deal more. It's a great, it's a great space for the city, and it's certainly an architectural project that we can be proud of. Ditto to everybody said on Seattle, but another thing they said that as Seattle got more and more and more expensive, they saw, obviously, people moving out to the surrounding communities where, quote, they could afford. And they, their other comment was, those communities need to get on board with affordability too, and start building out, because everybody's going to get pushed there, and then that's just going to go up. And so it really is a, it's a group project. Ms. Crowder?
Um, thank you. A beautiful Union Station. Thanks to everybody who came out, and all the hard work from all the departments to make that happen. Tansey, thank you, very good job. I will say to you, the chamber trip was interesting, but philosophically, I think we could all pat ourselves on the back for looking at the human services and the human needs this city needs before growth gets so much that we're behind the eight ball. I really do think we should all be commended for realizing that we could be there and we don't want to be, and making steps, and really valuing what's important to us as it relates to the human being who lives here, not just sports arenas, not just roads, not just bridges, but the human capital that we have here. So I think we should applaud ourselves for stepping up and realizing how important that is early in the game.
Okay. Lindell?
I also echo the same sentiments about the Seattle trip and about Union Station. That was very, both were very impressive. I have two other things. This Saturday, May 5, at 10 o'clock at Laurel Hills Community Center, we'll be having another District E Community Meeting. The topic is going to be Dix Park, and you don't have to live in District E to come, anybody is welcome. Also, revisiting the, some of the recommendations about the bike lanes on Glen Eden Drive, that was one of the ones that we voted to leave as it was and not make any changes, except for something to do with safety near the Ridge Road intersection. So I've since looked into that a little bit further, and I would like to make a motion that on Glen Eden Drive, between Glenwood Avenue and Bellwood Forest, Forest Circle, the city stripe a bike lane with parking restrictions and safety measures, as was originally recommended to council. This is kind of the non-residential part of the, the street, and this would only be for the portion of Glen Eden Drive between Glenwood Avenue and Bellwood Forest Circle.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion, yeah.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
So I'm just checking with the manager, the clerk, or something. This is an item that came to us, and we discussed, and decided not to, was that a council decision not to stripe the bike lanes and everything there? Do you remember?
It was a vote, we took a vote, yeah. We, yeah.
Okay. So then this is a motion to change. I'm just making sure that procedurally, it's the way we're supposed to do it, that's all. Sure?
Can you just repeat the extents again?
It's Glen Eden Drive between Glenwood Avenue and Bellwood Forest Circle. That section of Glen Eden Drive has got commercial properties on both sides, and so putting in the bike lane where they wanted to put it in would not impact parking for residents, because there aren't any down there.
So you're saying it was in the list, but you took it out, and now you want to put it back?
Just this little piece of it. Mm-hmm. And I have talked with, with Eric Lamb about it, and, and he's talked with the B-PAC folks, and there wasn't an issue with that. So it's, it's supposed to be a compromise. It's supposed to be, we were able to find a way to give them a little bit...
Are you done with striping?
No.
Oh, she's asking to do the striping.
Yeah.
I mean, have we done the rest of the project yet? We haven't done the rest?
We haven't done any of it. We just voted to not do it at all on Glen Eden, and now I'm saying, let's do that little piece of it, yeah.
And so the rest of it would be like a share ride?
Yeah, which is what it is now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Confirming that staff has said, like, this makes sense in terms of like continuity and safety and...
Exactly, yes. Mm-hmm.
All right.
Okay, the motion's second. All in favor?
Aye.
The opposed?
That's it?
Okay.
That's it, thank you.
Madam Clerk, appointments?
Appearance Commission to vacancies, Martha L., L., LB, received seven votes, as did Clarence T. Mann, so those two would be appointed. Arts Commission, one vacancy. Natalie Brown received two votes. David Clegg was nominated by Crowder, Mendel, McFarland, Cox, and Stevenson.
[laughing].
So, their nominations at this point, you can do with it what you choose.
Let's just wait till next time.
Just put it on the next agenda, okay. Board of Adjustment, alternate member, one vacancy, no nominees. Environmental Advisory Board, one vacancy. Bobby Boeby received four votes, Jared Burton, three.
Okay.
House and Appeals Board, one vacancy, no nominees.
Okay.
Okay, appointments?
I mean, nominations?
Let me catch up with you. Oh, that's it, right?
Yeah, I don't see anything. No nominations.
No nominations, okay. I'm through.
Madam Attorney?
No report.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
You receive minutes in your agenda packet, which are recommended for approval.
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
The opposed? Okay, my understanding is we do not have an item for closed session today?
That's correct.
Okay, great. Okay, so we're getting ready to adjourn the meeting. Before I do, remind everyone to be back this evening at 7:00 p.m. Meetings adjourned.